Good evening. I am Mary Sullivan, City of Darien Alderperson Ward five. I serve as chairperson of the Administrative Finance Committee. I would like to call to order our committee of the whole. This is our second meeting to review the fiscal year twenty three City of Darien budget. Tonight I hope that we can conclude the budget review process. We will revisit a few items from last week including clarifying questions on a public works truck, A E D devices and training, pre trimming revised budget numbers, and the sixty seventh and Clerton Hills Road traffic light. But first we will start with the review of the police department budget with Chief Thomas. The final budgets remaining for review after that are the water funds, motor fuel tax, M F T and special service areas, S S A budgets. Additional information was provided to the city council on all these matters listed by Brian Vanna and Van Gombeck since our last meeting and have been posted on the City of Darien website. All city council members received copies of the fiscal year twenty twenty three budget along with summary pages and supporting documents. All of this information has been published on the City of Darien website. These meetings are being broadcast on Darien Cable Channel T V number six and will be available for viewing on the City of Darien website and the YouTube channel. So before we get started, um do you have anything to add Mayor Marquez? Uh Administrator Vanna? Charger Corin? Okay, so tonight we will then begin with um the budget uh by the police department and our Chief Thomas. If anything, can I start a topic?
Uh sure, just to uh focus on on overall budget. So uh how's the budget? I think it's been uh about a couple of dollars. A lot of the increases in the spending costs for uh safety, that's what I'm saying. Prior to that, uh. There's uh. Uh. What is the current budget? Uh so it's had been uh more factored in nature. It's uh important. Uh another area that's been. That will be. Where are we? About. Three months. We need to prosecute a little bit. Uh what? Additionally, uh cost. Uh five one two, but we didn't see those in the budget. That purchase was probably required by the city. Uh five. Uh I think there's a lot of things that we've done as well before and. Uh extra sharing funds. Uh some uh things that. Or yes, and uh. But. And. For the. Uh doing most likely in this uh this sort of budget. Think that um these funds can. With the job on uh finding uh funds, we need to uh. Uh we just support the funds. Pay for certain items. Loud D U I stake law. Um D U I funds, uh electronic taxation funds with addition of one charge fee. And the work. And the rest. For that is a good. It's working well. Uh some other things, this is the contract here for the uh loan personnel, uh their contract was from February thirtieth. So we were actually started in February thirty, uh nine month on the fifteenth, we got started. Like nine fifteenth, something. Um. This is what. Prosecution. Stuff. Um. This year uh we started a. It was part of. Talked about. Might be uh scheduling. And we. かけて. And that. Uh. Um. We get a lot for a couple of things. Used to just have to schedule everybody uh in thirds. Third on days to the noon, third on midnights regardless of uh calls for service being heavier on one shift than another, heavier on one day than another. Plus it's. New scheduling uh process. It's a lot of those issues or manpower. And uh workflow. That's important. Another big thing that uh changed is the uh forty hour continuing installation to live in. Uh. Now I have to go through this discussion to do new personnel rounds. Or training. And then. Uh we continue to make good use of uh technology. Uh building some good shared equipment, hired people, help them to all of those shit. Uh people in uh. So. But. Obviously, part of the budget needs to know the decisions to make. And uh. Hot track, uh ordinances and most uh. I think we're in good shape. Uh I would like to talk a little bit about philosophy if I may, even though it's a budget, you know, time. Uh so not so much the numbers as um what. And um I think a lot of people receive their their uniform and and um traffic stops and make arrests and most everything. And uh. We try not to think in those terms, obviously, uh unrest is appropriate and tickets are appropriate, but they're appropriate in the right time, right place. Um uh trying move to and um having a little bit of success, to give more success in uh the term a lot of people called um harm oriented policing, uh P O P. Uh it focuses on solving an issue versus enforcing um a a problem. And uh so our function is not to make arrests. Um arrests shouldn't be our first uh go to for a solution. But like I said before, it is an opportunity to uh regress it uh in error if necessary. Uh we would prefer to um using intelligent sled placing to investigate, analyze, then implement a better course of action, one that uh is more of a permanent uh solution. In the short term, it might take a little bit of time, but over the long term, it's much better way of uh solving a problem and working it out for uh our residents and businesses and all the other things that are in the city and ask for and needing um police type of assistance. So it's worked out well. I just um had to do some numbers on accidents the other day and in doing so, um I checked. So for example, in twenty twenty, I discounted that year because there was COVID and we had um a lot left accidents that year. But if I took the five prior years, so twenty fifteen through twenty nineteen, that averaged out to six hundred and twenty two accidents a year. In twenty twenty one, because our focus was not on um ticketing, I mean we loaded a lot of tickets, our focus was much more on um accident reduction. And so in twenty twenty one, we had uh four hundred and six accidents, it was twenty percent reduction, hundred and twenty six. Fewer um crashes than we had um at the average of the five prior year. We're getting two cars per accident, that's two hundred fifty two cars, that's two hundred fifty two drivers, that's going to have to uh get a rental in order to fix their car, get their car fixed, to have insurance rates go up and that's what I think. Uh to me, it's uh very important. Um. We're having some issues with uh Hexagon. It's a company that uh. We paid them to to. Do a little. Uh calls for service, um report, police reports, all those different types of things. So it's very hard to get the data, so I had to go back to twenty nineteen. Twenty nineteen looking at um like a five year average again, crime was around forty six percent for violent crime and forty nine percent for property crime. So all those different types of things, I think it's pretty difficult when you're just looking at the budget, you see a bunch of numbers and all these things. What does that mean in real life? Uh hopefully in real life, using that those um dollars or tax um here funded monies to uh drive down crime and drive down accidents and uh. Come on, come on, conversation for uh testing whatever you want to.
Okay. Any questions for Chief before we start going through the numbers? Yes, Charger Corin?
Thank you. Uh I know we are going to be focusing on expenses here, but one thing that I've been thinking of more from the revenue side, can you touch on it? Is there people's total sharing and see funds and that. Uh I understand that you have one office that dedicated to respect the detail. It depends if you have any to a certain amount of dollars associated with this issue, but it's involved in. And this seems like this year the amount of dollars to the street that's last year. And the last year, the last team that we covered that talked to their officer, we talked about that a little bit. Yes, we. Their uh. This is their. Couple weeks ago. Uh it looks like the federal government is very slow on processing. Um I think they saw a basis as far back as twenty fifteen. And it looks like there's um a little over three million dollars sitting in. See, um if you have that in the fourth, it's kind of all uh dollars. Um usually there's fifteen, sixteen percent of that, so hopefully they'll um start processing this and we'll figure that out. Um settle employees are definitely.
Then we'll um start at page thirty one. This is the police department budget in the summary page and then we'll go into the um breakdown pages. And like we did last week, we'll focus on the uh city council discretionary expenditures and unless there's something that um we want to ask, question about or discuss, just let me know already again. But um we'll, you know, look at page thirty one, but then we'll start um going by uh count uh page thirty two. So we have um salaries of civilians, salary of officers, but then under overtime, which is about forty to forty thirty, we have a discretionary amount of thirty one thousand four sixty five. Questions on that? Yeah. Anything else?
Uh a couple things and not even on the discretionary, in terms of the officer's salaries, holiday pay, more than this year, it's actually down. From last year, about eighty two thousand, that's a big difference. They've got a function up there, spending a lot of hours just scheduling, it's a million, and that's. And seeing this overtime, that's close to the discretionary, it's one of my greatest expression that I could give you. In my. To. Talk about that.
Yeah, I'm not uh, I think it's just a matter of habit, it's not been since I've been here. But we are correct, it's um it's a matter of um. Federal base that's ten fifteen to nine. Three fifteen years old, that requires um that that cost to pay, what they're talking about, with that overtime plus is um half an hour a day uh every day. We pay there's no overtime for call panel maintenance, so uh um having the log community possession, you have to see this, you have to take it off to all those things that's uh cost from federal limits.
Anything else, Mike? Anyone else? Moving on, then uh going to benefits, there's no discretionary expenditure, so we'll move on to page thirty three. Um under auxiliary police, thousand dollars. I'm not. Discuss those, but I wouldn't uh anticipate it would be anything too difficult. Okay, moving back to page thirty three, boards and commissions, of course, auxiliary police a thousand dollars. Boards and commissions. Discretionary thousand dollars. Using subscriptions, twenty three hundred. Any questions on investigation and equipment? Yeah.
We have two rings during the uh summer, these uh remains, it's an outdoor range, and then we have post books. It's a new one. Good sign. My question, Chief, we've got an item this year called Thompson Reuters, forty five hundred, and it's software. And it's software. Uh it's software that can be used for fight sometimes, um but it's never broken, now it is a individual.
Anything else, Mike? How about liability insurance? Questions? Maintenance and equipment? Page thirty four. Maintenance vehicles. Total.
That's right. Probably thirty one, twenty nine, about two thousand. Car wash is thirty two, two thousand dollars. And four thousand is probably more. Uh we have a number. That's why we're on two hundred fifty dollars. But I keep calling that a projection, what it is. Every other is um here. Like it seems, car wash for uh. It's a whole piece. For lots of. That's the first of fifteen thousand. The uh unmarked cars uh before us, it will um be a heavy at this year. But um the uh requirement um that it can be done for ourselves, um we have. And we set thresholds, so higher um countries, so we're higher. This is year twenty twenty four. And uh the floors are like five and fifteen. The explores that we use for um marked floods, um the purchase three years ago, uh we kept them uh by the. Tavos for six years, I'm guessing that we're probably going to do that for six years. It would probably uh next budget cycle, which would be the floors, it's uh two budget cycles after that, which would be. My car is the closest one on this uh seventy five to thirty three, that is sixty three. It's fine. I'd rather. Not. Yeah, we don't know where it's going at all, and we hope that by that fiscal year, it won't be done. Nobody has that principle. On the table.
Anything else on vehicle maintenance? Uh please, just friends, did you get on the public relations, there's a thirty five hundred hours discretionary, any questions on that? Here's rent, equipment, three thousand? Like training and education, ten thousand, three hundred. Travel meetings, fifty five hundred? Call phones, uniforms, employees. Any questions? Here is page thirty five. Here's the exam, oil? Consulting, professional services, seventy five hundred. Mike?
Yeah, so this one, Chief, uh the there's something new called mental health examination. I recall earlier when we were talking about that new uh law. And then you're correct, um mental health examination um will be required, I believe. Um there's still some issues uh we didn't discuss with legislative level uh about uh. Prior to bill that needs to change some of that. Can't be, you know, for the players, mental health exam, it's third of the last uh thirty years. So nothing else. Lots of. New hire. The one who needs five dollars. And for the team, that's just a ballpark.
Chief, is there any way to get, is there any funding associated with those mandates that you can get?
There's not. Something.
I had to ask a question, I can't be answered, but I had to ask a question. Anything else on consulting professional services? Do you make the uh child center, twenty seven seventy? The discretionary, any way down to capital purchases? Witness?
Uh we purchased license plate payments um uh out of the technical sharing fund. Uh it's been ugly, those payments have sat in the main office and are proof of permits for the over the year. Um since in June, it's been in front of the U D B time, private communication, trying to get permits in order to see if it's put those flights up. Uh there's conversation, it's probably been a week ago, maybe only a week ago. And uh it's similar to ninety eight percent complete and should be getting uh approval.
Where are those in place? Or where did you commit?
Uh. No, I know, it's uh they're gonna be on uh the uh exit for I P five and two D six. And seventy thirteen and uh.
Any questions, more questions for the Chief? And the police budget? Mike? Anything else, Chief? People want?
I think it's um a very difficult question to answer. Um. There's a lot of different philosophy on the rail. But um I think a couple of measures of um rail is um work and uh. And uh coming to work. And when you do come to work, hard to work. And uh the officers are doing a very good job, and they've called um their general, that's the uh citizen general who calls into their nine one one center and says, bye, ten degrees Celsius, nine one. And then when you look at the extra time that they have for collective work, they're um self initiated, that's the very high. Uh number of tickets and uh other type of total full production is not high. Uh the twelve hour shift, I think, is a lot to do there. It's um. Being a team of train, taking in that's a lot to do there. So we have very low sick time and it's um high performance, and so based on a couple of those things. Um. You see a lot in the news about uh retention and uh we are looking at twenty one flights here. Time and we're using some of these things for years. Uh. We're changing it out.
It's uh we're done with this, then we'll move on to um water fund budget. Page ninety six. Anything else? First on that, sir? So um. Page ninety six and ninety seven. Our sign if pages, then we'll go right to page ninety eight. We have the summary, summary and descriptions. Got.
There's a page, there's a page, there's a. General fund overview. I mean, you have to. One two, that's what I said. That's what I said. That's what I said. That's what I said.
And you have the same, we're getting twelve hundred this year.
I'm talking to you.
I'm sorry, what's next? Yeah.
And then. We have uh money and our water, we have the. Right.
And anything else about the uh the police people in C F C M L, any support in that?
Well, which is. I'm hoping that's actually. The little bit of water. That is. We get. Two years. Then again. We. Be. To the. Down. We want to appreciate some.
I think that. Any questions for Brian on that? Anything else on to page ninety eight? Page ninety eight, there's no state budget discretionary expenditures under salaries benefits or operating, for any questions? Page ninety nine?
I don't know if there's any, just have a chance to look at this, because it's small, so that's under some forty two nineteen last line, I don't have that.
Do you wanna address that now, or do you wanna address it and go back to? Okay, so.
The figures that are portrayed in the budget for street department is seventy five hundred, also in the water funds is seventy five hundred. That is for the lease of the equipment, the A E D, the A E D without management. Specifics are going to be throughout the city with various locations. In conjunction with additional twenty five hundred, that is for the actual train, it's seventy five hundred, fifteen thousand total, there's for the lease, some instructions. But it's about the twenty five hundred, twenty five thousand, and strictly for the trading, forty quarters. What was it, twenty five hundred then? It's seventy five hundred, seventy five hundred, that is total, so are you in the water or is it just water?
Are all the training under forty to sixty days? Under the water? Fun budget.
I could, I could make those changes, but we're really still not sure, no matter what, you know, the, the groups are saying. So if we end up not buying it this year, that will just be more in the fund balance at the end of this year and would carry over to the purchases into next year.
But the trucks are ordered, so when they get them, we will, we'll have the money to pay for them.
Yes.
Okay. Whether it comes out of twenty-two or twenty-three.
Unfortunately, we can't get a good answer, no matter who we talk to, it seems to change every two weeks.
Which brings us back to the topic we had last week. We have a, two trucks on here for twenty-four. A trailer, I'm sorry, a trailer and a truck. Is that something we need to look at? And getting, getting the ball rolling on those. We have the pickup truck, a truck number five hundred. And then a trailer number four-one-one. Not enough trailers are backed up too.
I mean, what we looked at, and Chris, correct me if I'm wrong, with the one vehicle that was earmarked, uh, that Alderman Shower had recommended. We looked at that and based on the timing, yeah, I know, but just based on that timing for that truck, it makes sense, um.
That's municipal services.
Correct, correct. So I don't want to be.
No, no, I understand. I'm just saying that we have the same type of issue here. And is that something that we need to look at, getting the truck number five hundred on order now? And we probably won't get it till twenty-four.
Chris, I'll let you, why don't you chime in on that?
Yeah, so I mean realistically, uh, we would have to look at what, if there's even an open contract right now. But I mean, we saw last year, and I think probably this year, truck, or this coming up year, I'm not sure. But I would probably anticipate replacing that truck with somewhere in an F-two-fifty, F-three-fifty range. It's currently a Ford Ranger and it's not really useful for the rest of the fleet for getting other work done. So it would be a little bit of an upsize, but this year there was a short window of about a month and a half to two months where we were able to order an F-three-fifty. And, and again, at that point, there was about, their, their best estimate was eight months, you know, probably for delivery. And, and again, so, uh, uh, the truck is starting to have some issues. Again, we can definitely look at it if the money's there, that, that would be a council decision. It, you know, at the direction, we could see when, when there is an opportunity to, to pu- to purchase it, you know, based on open contracts. But I don't even know when they have them open right now.
And that's part of the problem with the open contracts is typically they run, they run for about six to nine months. Recently, they basically forward, I was forward in this case, they closed the contract, uh, with no advertisement or no, no notice. All of a sudden, the contract came back, and if you recall, that's one of them, well, since we identified that, we came back to the city council and ordered that truck. Cause the window, again, was shortened. So, you know, to your point, while, you know, we don't want to keep ordering trucks for no reason. Uh, but I, I think we can take a look at it to, you know, make sure we're making the best decision on our ends with reliability, on the rating scale, basically. So we'll look at the trailer again, and we'll look at the Ford, the replacement for the smaller truck for the F-two-fifty. And we'll see what the state has at the same time, but we haven't seen any contracts that have been coming out lately. If we can get back.
So five, truck five hundred specifically, you're saying what?
We're gonna take a look at it and we'll.
Just considering, this is the, you know, really the last budget meeting.
If we can consider it, if we could put it in there, we would love to take the opportunity to at least earmark it. If there is something different, staff will recommend to remove it and hold. So if that is acceptable to the council.
I mean, all we're doing is moving, what, something that's going to be in our twenty-four budget into our twenty-three budget, correct? I mean, I think it makes a lot of sense to try, try to get it as early as possible.
And to, and to piggyback off that, and, you know, we, we talked about it last week and Tom's right. I mean, I brought it up with, with the chief and, yeah, we hope that we're even gonna get police cars. I'm not saying we should go out and buy a whole fleet, that's not the case. But I'm saying, as a city, we should look at every vehicle that's in this city. And if it's close to being borderline or within a year or two years from being ordered, we should look at it and see, maybe we should think about ordering it now. So we have it, because we don't know what we're gonna get. And that's my concern that's going on with it. Because like I said, with, you know, dump trucks, all of a sudden, you, you run out of the snowplow, people are gonna start yelling and screaming. We don't have enough police cars, we're gonna, people are gonna have issues with it. Those are my, that's my main concern, because we can't guarantee we're gonna get, you know, these cars on time.
And to your point with the larger trucks, we just recently found out that the chips for the larger trucks are made in Ukraine.
Terrific.
Yeah, just a little bit of a irony, if you want to say, but nonetheless, we'll, uh, if we can earmark both of those items in there. For budget inclusion, we will get back, uh, within the next couple of days on the rating and let Brian know and, um.
So you're talking about, so under capital purchases, equipment fifty dash forty-eight fifteen, you wanna earmark the pickup truck and the, you said, the trailer?
Trailer, correct.
So for tr- truck number five hundred?
Right.
And to see if that's something we can put in the twenty-three budget? And do I have a consensus, um, council members to do that?
Well, you already had them scheduled for twenty-four, correct, Dan? So it's just a matter of moving it from one year to the other.
Erica, you.
We just need to check the twenty-four price.
I saw you shake your head.
Could've been higher or lower, but.
Okay, so you've got everyone agreeing here on the, on, you know, that you should go ahead and plan for that.
The trailer's a little more simpler, cause we have a good source locally that we can tap into. So, um, you know, we'll, we will research that immediately.
And, and I would say, I, I just pulled up the three-year vehicle projection. Truck five hundred currently has a seventy-three point nine four rating, so we're on the verge. It, it needs a seventy-five to be replaced. You're just shy of a little bit more than a point over. It, it needs to go. So I, I, I would definitely say that number, you know, and, and we might need to. Again, I'm taking a best estimate at that, at that price. I'm hoping that price is still a valid pri- and I don't even know if I could get anybody to give me an estimate, cause I don't know if they know. So that would be the only thing that I'm a little concerned about, because.
We'll work a conservative number and make sure we have enough.
Okay.
Dan, the trailer, you said we can get that local, so that you don't have.
Potentially local, depending on the type, the style, the weight, uh, the weight rating.
It's a trailer attached to the truck, it's.
It's separate. The trailer is a separate, sep- called separate vehicle.
But you wouldn't get the trailer until you know what truck you're getting?
No.
Okay.
Well, typically, we know what type of trailer we need. That trailer will be adaptable to the trucks, yeah.
Okay. Any other questions on the truck, five hundred? Any other questions on? This budget, the water fund budget?
Uh, just real quick, the truck number five hundred shows up twice. One is a three-quarter ton and one is a one-ton. Is that, oh, that's five hundred twice. One of them for twenty-five, one for twenty-four.
Sorry, Tom, what page? I just.
I'm on page one-on-one.
Isn't one the trailer?
From the top.
Oh, no, the trailer's four-eleven.
Yeah, we'll check the numbers. It shows the very, yeah, it shows truck five hundred, one ton.
And then again, is a three-quarter ton a little farther down?
We were gonna, I think, I think last year I had it earmarked possibly for a three-quarter ton, and I think this year I moved it up a class to help us. Uh, wh- when we looked at a couple of replacements.
So we're just talking about one truck, but we don't know whether it's three-quarter or one-ton?
We're gonna, we would go with a one-ton.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that, we'll just remove the three-quarter, reference to the three-quarter ton?
Yep.
Okay. And then trailer number four-eleven connects to truck number five hundred?
And various other vehicles.
Okay, got it. You good with that, Tom Belzak? Okay. Any other questions on the water fund budget? Okay, then we will move on to water depreciation. Page one-twenty-seven. Any questions on the summary page? Okay, if not, we'll move, which is page one-twenty-seven, we'll move into the budget details, page one-twenty-eight. We have, um, account twelve dash fifty-one, forty-eight fifteen, equipment, two-hundred-and-sixty-two thousand for discretionary. Which is truck four-oh-three and truck four-oh-eight.
Those are the two trucks that are on order currently that we don't know when we're gonna get.
So we forwarded them for May first, so the balance is just being carried over.
Right, cause those were intended for fiscal year twenty-two, correct?
Chris, was, didn't you say one of them we might get by the end of?
Yeah, I, I was told, um, that the larger dump truck, uh, was supposed to be built by Peterbilt, um, in quarter one of this year. It then still has, it has to go to Monroe to, for the cer- and they can't tell me any timeframe, and I haven't heard an update as to if. It will actually be done from Peterbilt in quarter one. As we're getting close to the, uh, we've got a month here, basically. Not hearing any ups, update is not really encouraging to me, you know, to be honest.
Yes.
Mary, uh, I'm sorry, if I could go back to page one-hundred-and-twenty-seven, I was just having trouble reading my own writing, so I couldn't get the question out fast enough. Um, fiscal year twenty-two, estimated actual, about five or six lines up from the bottom. Capital outlet, uh, budget, three million, one ninety-five, estimated actual eighty-three-three at the end of January. Brian, we're already at a hundred-and-twenty thousand roughly in that account.
Okay, I might have increased that since, let me double check. It'll take me a second to pull up. What are we to date, Mike?
Uh, just under a hundred-and-twenty thousand.
Then I will increase it to that number and review it.
So, can you recap what you're changing?
He's going to change that from the eighty-three-three to, I don't know if you're gonna add any to the hundred-and-twenty. I don't know if there's anything more between now and the end of the year. Uh, it's account forty-three-ninety.
Yeah, I'll, I'll increase that to the year-to-date and check.
Okay. Any questions on that? Further questions? Any more questions on the trucks that we're waiting on? And any of the details on page one-twenty-eight?
I don't know, Dan, can you just review that, two million, nine fifty?
The water meter change out, Dan?
Yes, this is, uh, again, this is a program that I know we just recently brought to the city council. And finally, it's, it's coming to fruition. So after a number of years, uh, we co-opt with other municipalities. Bottom line is that DuPage County and the city of Darien are moving forward with the program. There's some other side, um, side businesses that are going with, not side businesses, side deals, if you want to say, with other municipalities that aren't, um, basically as ours. DuPage County will be installing the infrastructure, what's referred to as a smart system or automated meter reading system. Uh, so DuPage County, under the agreements, will be providing and installing and maintaining infrastructure as it relates to those, to the automated meter reading. In conjunction with that, those items or antennas are gonna be placed onto water towers and/or strategic locations to be able to read the water meters. Um, so that's the first part of it. The second part of this is the meter program itself. The meter program, uh, which is part of this figure, includes removing and replacing all the residential meters with some limited commercial. Uh, when I say limited commercial, we, the staff has been, over the last couple of years, minus COVID, uh, replacing water meters that are ready to be adapted to the automated meter reading system by putting in another piece of equipment onto it. So, uh, the process is in route. Our real goal is to start rolling out the program. I just received the tentative schedule today. We just had a large, uh, rather a great meeting a couple of week ago, kickoff meeting. Uh, we're gonna start promoting it. Uh, when I say promoting it, there'll be a little video that will basically say what we're doing, how we're doing it, and besides why we're doing it. Um, and then there'll be follow-ups with a company that has been vetted, uh, to do, it's a plumbing company. And they will be the ones that will be making telephone calls, reaching out to residents, sending out postcards, scheduling the appointments. Uh, the appointments will be basically six days a week, okay? Um, so it's really gonna be a massive operation. Well, we target a subdivision, it'll be thirty-day increments. We plan on getting everything done within a year. Uh, approximately, it's ten thousand meters, I'll refer to it.
Is there any cost to the residents?
No, there is absolutely zero cost. The only cost that they may have, we are, in the contract, we put a, um, I'll call it a parts list together. In some cases, uh, a ground strap, for example. A ground strap, for those of you that don't know, when you disconnect the water meter, let me back up. The copper within the house, within the homes of Darien typically have what's referred to a ground. That ground is from the electric panel, which is grounded to the water service. That water service grounds all the way back out to the water main, which is the actual ground. When you disconnect the water service, excuse me, the water meter, and there is no strap or a picture of, set of, uh, cable, uh, jumper cables from one side to the other. When you remove that meter and there's no wire in between there, you have the potential to have some shorts within the house and/or potentially, uh, a fire. So we, the city, when the plumbers go in there, they will have these ground straps with them. Whatever home does not have a ground strap, the plumbers will install, the city will pick up that cost. It's very minimal in the grand scheme of things. Uh, at the same time, there's valves. There's a valve pri- when the water service, prior to the meter and after the meter. We're currently, we have, uh, spoken to the plumbers, uh, to plumbers that we, the city, are gonna take responsibility if our plumbers break the valve. So in many cases, residents don't take the opportunity to exercise their valves. Um, and usually what happens is when they need to shut off the water because they have a leak, the gate valve specifically. The gate valve is some, is basically a handle, a round handle, and you turn it. Well, those, if they don't get exercised and over the years are probably twenty-five, thirty, thirty years old, the gate valve breaks in place. So in that case, the water buffalo box has to get shut off, that part has to get cut out and put in. So we have told the plumbers that if and when the valve breaks by our fault, that we will replace it. And we have some costs if the residents want to replace their valves after the meter, as well as before the meter, especially if it still works, with a newer style valve that's referred to as a ball valve. Uh, but all, that whole program will be obviously put out to residents along with the costs, and the costs are, are very good costs.
And this is something everyone needs to participate in.
Yes, yes.
Yes, Brian?
Dan, maybe you could just comment though quickly, while it's not a new expense, slower meters start running accurate. That will result, why don't you just?
Correct, and one of the, the most important reasons that we're doing this, majority of our meters are running anywhere from five, almost five percent, up to eight and a half percent slow. And where the water is not being picked up, especially with all the water-saving devices that are out there, the low, what's referred to as the low flow or a quarter gallon per minute. Um, if you recall, we've done sampling over the years, uh, probably close to a hundred fifty, two-hundred fifty.
About five hundred.
Five hundred, was it five hundred? And we basically put reports together and it showed where, and they were random reports through random meters throughout town. So we assembled all that and said, yes, we need to be a little more, we need to be proactive. The average life of a meter is approximately, uh, fifteen years. Um, we've stretched it to beyond that, where it needs to be removed and replaced to capture some of the revenue or the water costs that we've been losing. And this is also a proactive program that Chris has to report back to the Illinois Department of Natural Resources, what we're doing to conserve additional water. And this is one of the measures that many municipalities are, are taking.
And, Dan, I'm sorry, in, in addition to that though, I meant if a resident has a meter now, and they're paying based on a slow meter, when that accurate meter comes in, they'll pay more, because you're, you're actually reading the real gallons that went through. Whereas prior to the meter change, um, you know, you're, you're running slow. Now, that will have, uh, an impact on residents, maybe minor some, maybe not, depends on how slow the meter is. But what, what it will help the system in future years, if that increases the revenue, that also might postpone any rate increases that might have to come down the road. So it's just, it's just initially, um, when, when we have the current rate and somebody gets a new meter in.
But doesn't it eventually catch up with the resident? Cause it, you know, that they will eventually have an actual read done? And it'll go pro- backwards? No?
No, once the meter records what's gone through the meter, that's it. So what the, you know, meters don't, I want to make sure people understand, meters don't move by themselves. Water has to flow through them in order to activate them. And in many cases, uh, a humidifier, for example, which is a very low, um, a low type of flow, many of those meters aren't picking up that flow. Well, during the winter, a lot of residents do have humidifiers. How much is that? You know, maybe another two thousand gallons at the end of the day. But they're two thousand gallons times, and, and again, you know, let's say five thousand, mo- due to multiplication and so on and so forth. Gets to be a pretty, a pretty good number.
Well, we always talked about in the city that we think we lose about five percent. Is it five percent?
We're more than that. I think this year we're twelve, was it?
This year we're just a little bit over seven.
Okay.
Okay, so.
Last year, we were like fourteen, but we had a large main break on South Frontage Road that wasn't, that took some time to actually be, be found. So, you know, we, we run in between these ranges.
But that includes the, the water main breaks you just mentioned.
Yep.
What do you think that we lose off of the houses, just out of curiosity? Five percent maybe?
Yeah, yeah, I, I, I think it's probably pretty fair.
So if you, uh, uh, so if you think about it, if you got four-point-eight million dollars, ten percent of that is four-hundred-and-eighty thousand, five percent is two-hundred-and-forty. You know, you take it over ten years, that's two-point-four million. Brian's right, yes, you might pay a little bit more for it. But it's also a situation where we're not gonna have to raise it, you know, raise the rates going down or as, as fast as we have been. Because in the last, you know, twelve years, we, I, I can't remember what it was when I first moved in the city of Darien, but I think it was less than two bucks per, you know, thousand, I can't even remember, twenty years ago, but.
That was well-watered too, right?
Yeah, that was prior, yeah, that's right.
You know, but the point is, is that the cost of water just continued to go up. And the city of Chicago is gonna pass it on to DuPage, is gonna pass it on to us, and so that's where we're at on it. I mean, I, you know, it's, it's, anything that we can do to get our water numbers accurate and in the long term, keep it, you know, keep it down, that's gonna be the most important thing.
I mean, couldn't you also have meters that run fast?
No.
Why?
Haven't seen it yet. There hasn't been a meter that has gone past a hundred-and-one-point-five percent, which is the American Water Works Association standard for a meter. So that's, and again, I don't think we've even seen a hundred-and-one-point-five.
Okay.
Um, you know, what I do want to make clear is, you know, while our, it's referred to as an LMO report, which is basically the, uh, water accountability that Chris has to complete every year. Uh, IDNR has not been consistent with the templating and the formulas. And Chris, correct me if I'm wrong, if we're starting to standardize it a little more?
Yeah, over the.
Speaking.
Over the past few years, um, they've gotten a lot more stringent on the reporting. Um, they've definitely, um, standardized it more. We now have to submit two forms to them. One is an actual audit. Um, and that, it basically runs down a bunch of information that we have to gather, a lot of it from DuPage County as far as, uh, how things are billed and, and the, the amount of revenue, um, or really comes down to the gallons that we sell to different types of residents. And then, um, it gets imported into this LMO two report, as Dan, uh, calls it, and that's what they call it too. But, um, basically, so they are getting more stringent and, and the gentleman that I deal with, uh, typically on an annual basis, um, this year has indicated to me that they are actually even talking about, um, in maybe the not-too-distant future, about bringing in people to verify the validity of the information that you're giving. So right now, they're basically just taking my word that I'm giving them the most accurate information that I have. They're talking about actually potentially bringing auditors in similar, like they probably do, they do for the rest of the city information and actually verifying that information is accurate. So they're, they're talking about trying to get really, um, accurate on these reports. And, and just so everybody understands, the reason that they're so adamant about these reports and, and being under the, these percentages and being within your allocations is because, uh, as we pull from the, the Lake Michigan through the city of Chicago and DuPage Water Commission, um, nobody in this area puts their water back into the Lake Michigan. So our water is treated and put into the rivers that flow downstream, and they don't go back into the lakes. And, and whereas every other basically area, you know, on the other Great Lakes that pulls from the lakes, they're putting their water back into it. So if we exceed the allocation that's, um, given down from Congress, basically, they have the right to tell, all, they have the right to pull the allocation or force us to put the water back into the lake, and that's gonna be a substantial cost to it.
Substantial penalty is probably a better way to put it.
Yeah.
Um, so there's a lot of science, and I know we digressed here, but there's a lot of science to how, why, what, and, you know, how things are run. And the allocation, if you have, recently, the allocations, Brian, I'm sorry, do you recall if the allocations were, uh, held up or, um? Did they?
Be new allocations?
Yeah, the new allocations, cause ours was reduced.
Oh, oh, the, for, for the existing customers.
I didn't follow up on, uh.
It was de minimis, I think, right?
Yeah, for us, it was de minimis, but again, there was other municipalities that were trying to counter it by either increasing or holding what their current allocation is. So it, it's really, you know, to counting how many gallons are being utilized and where they're going.
So basically, it gives more accurate data, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
So it provides data integrity in a sense?
It is at best, and you know, unfortunately, I don't believe that the last four years are really, and Chris, correct me if I'm wrong, while we feel the numbers are correct, there's no pattern, just for the simple reason that the templates have changed and some of the procedures have changed. Whereas if we were to go back seven years, it probably would be more consistent, because the template was in place. You do this, you do this, you do this, and it was consistent for all those years. And now they've, they've been tinkering with it, and I'm sure it's for the better. It's more stringent if anything else.
It, it's definitely more stringent, yeah, but I, I think it has gotten, um, it has gotten more consistent. It's just getting used to the information that they're asking since it's new. Um, and then every year, they're trying to fine-tune a certain portion of the report. So, um, you know, one year, he, he covers a certain area, wants you to make sure you're really good in that area. And then the next year, it's focusing on something else and, you know, and I think, you know, as, as Brian had, had kind of alluded to, you know, people might see a wa- uh, a higher water bill. You know, I think really the thing to just make sure everybody understands is, it's, it's gonna be an accurate water bill. And, and just like when you go to the gas station, you're getting charged accurately what's going into your gas pump. That, that gas station wants to make sure they got their, they, their money's worth, and we need to make sure, that's our recorder, that's our register to make sure we get paid for what we pumped into your house. And, and I think it's important to, to, for everybody to understand that making sure we, we allocate, you know, get that money back is, is right.
And just one more.
I'm sorry, but that is one area two people could still conserve. You know, I've talked to people in the past, maybe they weren't happy with their water bill, but they, um, they watered their lawn all, all summer. So there are ways residents could have an impact to reduce that too.
We've seen, we've seen just our water pumpage go down. So back when I started doing the report, when I took over the water forum position back in two thousand nine, you know, we were pumping all over a billion gallons a year, and we're down to a little over nine-hundred million. That's a, that's a pretty substantial amount of, of water that we decreased. And literally, it, it, it basically boils down to, you're seeing more people, as water rates have increased during that time, while not substantially necessarily from us, but they have gone up, you know, in, in the course of a decade, a little bit more. A- and people start to conserve, because they're finding it's not important to, you know, have green grass, you know, all summer long a- and sprinkle every day, you know? So we've, we've gotten through our, um, through our, uh, backflow program, we've gotten contacted numerous times for people capping and removing their, you know, sprinkler meters and, and their sprinkler, disconnecting the sprinkler system from their water system. So, uh, you know, it, it, that's where you see a lot of it. And then you find, you know, the little leaks that start to add up as you put in a more accurate meter, you know, people's toilets, you know? That, probably ninety-five percent of the leaks that we go to are high build.
Yeah.
Halls that we go to, it's in toilets and it adds up quick.
And one of the beauties of the new program is, and we haven't activated this portal, nor have we approved it. If residents want to be able to go on the portal for, and set alarms.
Yeah.
Um, those alarms could be set via, for their telephone, whatever the case is. Okay, if. Okay, if I use more than, what, you, you set the number, the resident sets the number, whether it's 5% my daily usage, or it's on a monthly, 10%, whatever the case is. Residents will have that portal if they want. We just have not enacted it. There's a, there's a cost to that. But, and that's for the resident portal.
Yeah, but that I think would be extremely beneficial to, to residents. For example, I had a neighbor of mine who went out of town for two weeks, had the water line to their refrigerator broke, bursted, and virtually flooded a good portion of the whole downstairs. So if they had, could put an alert like on their phone, they would all of a sudden notice that right away that they've got excess usage, they're out of town, they shouldn't have any, they could, they could set it down to virtually nothing. And they could have easily have found that issue. So I think when we sell the program, I think if we had that type of app out there, it would really show people, you know, how it could benefit them by having this new, new meters.
Well, that's true, and again, the flavor from the representatives that we met with said it all sounds great, but at the end of the day, it's been less than, what, 5%, 1%? 1% was 1%, 1% have really gone into it. So again, the jury is on it, but at the same time, the city, well, the city and DuPage County will be setting up parameters for alarms. Those alarms will be, you know, we're going to set them, and again, basically, it's what I just rehearsed, 5% over their normal usage. You know, so, and we'll have all updated contact information. Obviously, if they're out of town, we can go over there still and shut the water off, but we'll be notified. Especially when, you know, some residents leave town and we have a polar vortex and next thing you know is the water's leaking and it's just damaged the entire house. So we will have that option at no additional cost to us. It's just the portal for residents to get in there.
And what about people who have like a DDUK meter for their sprinkler system or any other items? Does this impact that whatsoever?
No, we are not, we are not touching those. Those are basically read once a year. If the county wants to activate those through the AMR, that's entirely up to them. We do not, you know, take any credit for it. We do not install them or remove them. So it's entirely a county slash resident issue.
Yes, Mike?
I think I know the answer to this, or I'm assuming the answer to this. I'm assuming we're going to replace the meters in the non-residents as well as the residents. So it'll be everyone covered by our system because I know the non-residents pay a different rate than we do. So it will capture all of the non-residents as well.
Correct. Yeah, we have various locations that's referred throughout town that are referred to. And they're all incorporated, serve, Lake in the Woods, for example. And there might be a couple other subdivisions that are unincorporated, but we service. We service them through IGAs that have been put in place for 20 years or so.
So I think Hinswood would be another area.
Yeah.
Okay.
We don't serve Hinswood. DuPage County has.
They pay for Darien water.
There's part of it. I think there's a couple addresses. They're all, the addresses are, you know, unless you know where the water is at, you know, if they're yellow, if they're red hydrants, they're probably ours. If they're yellowed.
I've got resident friends in Hinswood who tell me they pay Darien water.
But, but everyone on our system will be getting a new meter?
Correct.
Dan, a few years ago, we put smart meters into about 200, 300 homes. Do those, will we go into those homes and do anything to those homes?
The only smart meters that really we put in, and this is the meter we're using, is referred to as the iPearl, which is the smart meter. And there's a, in those particular cases where those meters have been replaced, this is where it's going to be an additional cost savings realized. A remote called, what's the remote? MXU. The MXU is basically slapped over the existing remote. So that's the beauty of the program. We want to make sure that when we started replacing meters, that we were sticking with a standard that we wouldn't have to go into maybe 500 homes, 700 homes.
Depending on how many, we did, I know I have one of them at my house. Because I, mine was one of the test ones, they came in and they replaced it with a smart meter. So you're saying they won't come in my house to do something outside?
That's correct.
And we probably did about 500 homes.
Oh, at least, yeah. Plus every time we replace a meter, you know, I couldn't tell you how many are out there or not out there, a thousand.
You guys have a record of the houses they've got?
Yes.
Any more questions on the water meter replacement plan? Thank you, Dan and Chris. Any more questions on the water depreciation fund? Okay. Then we will move on to motor fuel tax budget. This was a email you received. And it was also on the website. Page four isn't the number? I'm looking at it electronically. Any questions on page four? For MFT. Yes, Tom?
What is Rebuild Illinois miscellaneous income?
We receive, we receive revenue from the state. One is a regular MFT they normally collected. And then they have a second one. Let me just look that, because we've had a couple different. Oh, I'm sorry, that's the four, no, that's a special amount they've collected and they're passing on. I believe six payments to the municipalities, again, based on population. I don't recall how the state, how the state created that revenue, but that's an additional, that's coming to the municipalities.
And it ends in 24, because there is nothing in there for 25. Okay.
Yep.
Any other questions on page four, the summary of expenses and revenue? And we'll pop down to page five.
Just one comment.
Yes.
This is, we mentioned it last week, in the Capitol Projects, we'll be moving the, the Craxial program into MFT, and it's just not reflected yet.
Okay, so Craxial is being moved here. So when we get our final budgets, you'll see it in this.
Correct.
MFT. Any questions on page five?
Mary?
Yes?
I, I know salary is up compared to 245, 334, so it's up about 90,000. I know we're reallocating more to the MFT currently. But social security and Medicare are actually down from, based on the 245, they were 15,000 and 3,000. We're actually reducing those, and those don't equate to your typical Medicare and social security tax percentages. I didn't know where those numbers came from. I would imagine if salaries are up, those numbers would be up as well. And yet those are down fairly dramatically.
I'd have to double check that with Julia.
Yes, you know, Brian. She calculates those and, you know, I think, I believe the auditors take the salaries benefits and kind of lump those together, Mike, if I'm not mistaken, or they did at one point. So if we're increasing the salaries, I would have to check, we might increase the salaries in this budget, but not, but not reduce the social security and things in the regular streets budget.
But we did reduce, what I'm saying is we've raised the salaries here and reduced the taxes.
But I have to check the streets budget. I think that might have.
Maybe have taken the increase over there.
That accounts for the rest of the social security, and we just took the salaries here, but I'll double check that, Julie.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
One more. Operating costs, road material, 35,000 this year versus 17,500 last year. It's doubled.
Costs, stone costs, and also we had increased some quantities in there as well. So. That's really the gist of it, is an increase in the CA6 and the CA7 are the aggregates that we use. And.
So those are basically almost doubling in price?
I think last year was.
Last year was 17,500.
Or the actual?
The actual or the?
Well, that was the budget last year.
The budget for 22 was 17,500, but now you have down, fiscally, your 22 estimated actual is 34.
I may have put more stone in there. The goal of it was to utilize MFT funds. While the cost did go up, I think the intent was to use more of the funds that are available for that.
The current year actual is only 15, 1530 dollars through January.
There has to be, and I spoke to Julie about that, we have to take some stone that was utilized in the streets and basically adjust to reflect MFT, that balance there.
Yes? And municipal, okay, okay, so that must be where it's at. Thanks. So we're.
Material. 2,000 tons, 1750, averaging 1750 per ton. Last year's, because that's 35,000. I know that we took out the hot by two minutes, cold by two minutes this year as well, which that got put into the actual streets, the streets, streets, uh, counts.
That was gone last year too?
No, we, it was in there last year, except we pulled it out, we pulled it out because we couldn't use the funds for it. It might have been under a description itself, let's see, yeah, we, I have to check the. The other form for that. Last year's, Mike, I'm here, see what I had allocated. Yeah, I want a detailed sheet, I'm sorry.
So you're saying for road material, year-to-date, we're at?
1300.
13 something.
15, 1500, sorry?
One of the, one of the problems or concerns is when we code these bills, the guys look at what the stone was used for. Majority of the work is either the water department or the street department. Whatever the water department utilizes cannot be used for motor fuel tax.
Okay.
Whatever the street department uses may be used, or will be used, should be used for MFT. But it's put into road supplies, so it's a little bit, you know, when the guys are doing the bills, they don't think of the MFT right away. So typically what we end up doing is an adjustment, an accounting adjustment, taking all the streets or total of approximately 35,000 to expend the motor fuel tax and adjust it from the streets. That's what we typically do. Now the question is, what did I have budgeted for last year under that same account? Or I should say, what were my, what were my numbers? Last year, I had 1,000 tons at 1750. So the pricing I utilized was the same, and it was the same because I averaged what the CA6 and the CA7 is because Illinois Department of Transportation doesn't want to see my stone break down with a different aggregates. So I take an average. It's 1750 per ton, last year I had 1,000. And Mike, you're right, last year we did not have the, by two minutes, I had numbers in there for it, but they were never inserted. Whereas they were in the 23 forecast and as well as in the 24 forecast. But obviously you don't see it anymore because they're gone, just because we could not use those funds based on the company we were using. Makes sense?
Okay, but now you're saying you are going to be able to, because you're using a company that would allow you to do that?
No, with the asphalt, we're left it out right now. We still have, it's the same company we're using. The company that was the low bidder where we pick up the asphalt, this is for potholes. Okay, not to be confused with the road pro, the annual road program. So these are materials that we utilize from a vendor. The vendor that we utilize, Illinois Department of Transportation, has banned them from doing any type of business with the Illinois Department of Transportation. They're not in good standing with the Department of Transportation. We, as a consumer in this case, have no concerns because it's a product we pick up by the ton and we utilize it. This isn't a million dollar contract, and again, so there's some long history to why and how they were banned and how long they are banned for this particular company.
Mike?
I'm okay on that. I mean, it's going to wash one way or the other. It's one fund or the other fund. If you can get it to here, it's a matter of moving the accounting around. So I'm sure Dan will take care of that, but while we're on it, probably don't want to hear me talk anymore. But as we move down to the salt, I don't know if you want to move down on that page, but bio melt salt treatment, you've only got 9,450. Last year we had 33,000. This is that salt treatment, which I guess has been pretty effective. Yet it's only a third of what it was last year.
Correct, and that's because of, again, the Illinois Department of Transportation did not recognize that as a standard, if you want to say, with them. So we, if you look at the street division, we have that covered in there, correct. And we pulled it out of there because the Illinois Department of Transportation, again, hasn't accepted that particular product as a standard. Will they in a year, two years? I don't know. But every time we hear of these things, you know, I always try to lobby back down to Springfield and say, you know, it doesn't make any sense. It's a good product, so on and so forth. Some of these products, we're trying in our application for the first time. So, you know, before we make that argument, we want to make sure that the product works. I think this year we have two products, Chris, is it? Or three?
Three.
Three, okay.
And that's the same as thermal point I'm seeing in the streets.
Not the same.
Well, not the same, but thermal point I'm seeing in the streets and that's.
Correct.
What that is, just a different product, okay.
And then there's another product that we're going to be using that hasn't been identified by name yet. It's a mix, actually, and I forgot what the concoction is.
We're getting 3,000 tons of salt again, right?
That's our, that's our goal. We're basing on the inventory that we have at the end of the year, but it seems just for bidding, I mean, we just got the bid prices back now. So we always just put in there 3,000 tons just because it's too hard to judge in the middle of the season. We're going back in January and telling them what the allocation should be.
Actually, I'm a little more confused now because I found the thermal point in the streets. But last year had 32,000, this year has 32,000. And yet the bio melt, you're saying we have it in the streets, but yet the bio melt has decreased from the GO, whatever it was, from 30,000, 3,000 to 9,000. So we're still reducing that total expense by about 20, 25,000?
Have a look at the streets. We're not reducing.
Maybe we can look at that.
I know, yes, I say, I mean.
I, I know that we looked at, I know we have brought it back to municipal services, and we know there's three products. And the dollars should be accurate. We'll double check that through the agenda memo.
Okay, sorry.
Okay, no.
I'm glad you brought it up. I just didn't want to take off some looking.
Yeah, no.
I agree, yeah.
But I think if we, you can go ahead and say we're flagging it for further review and get some answers, and maybe you can even, you know, email us back like you did on some of the items from last week.
Sure.
Mary, I'm sorry, one question. Mike brought up the salaries and benefits and the MFT. And I'm looking at the spreadsheet, Mike, and actually it pulled the wrong cell. The, it's under salaries of 334,000, but I looked at the spreadsheet, that includes the benefits also. So I have to break up the salaries, actually only about 276, and the rest will be benefits. I'll fix that.
Thank you.
It's a, it's a what, it's a net zero.
Okay, okay, so you'll, you'll correct that?
Yes.
Okay. Any more questions on page six for the motor fuel tax budget? Any more questions on motor fuel tax? Any more questions on motor fuel tax? Okay. We will then move on to special service area number one. Page seven. Any questions on special service area?
That's Terry Hill, and we haven't raised anything for them ever in the last ten years, as long as it's been five, isn't it?
Yeah, we've, we've had that at five. There was a year or two we might have abated that, if there was, if not that many projects were identified. But between, you know, the burns and the studies there, we've been, we've been using it a bit more.
Is the fact that they haven't done a burn and delayed a burn, I mean, in the last two years?
We're doing burns. The burns should be done on an annual basis. I believe it's, there's three, there's three areas within Terry Hill. Every year, one of those, it's, rotates. I believe it's one every three years. We have a contract in place. I believe it's a five-year, that's a five-year contract. It's been very well maintained.
Okay.
And at an optimal level and economical level, in my opinion.
Any questions on special service area number one? Okay. So that completes the police department, water fund, water depreciation fund, MFT and SSA funds. And we're going to go back to, because we've gone through all the budgets, now we're going to go back to some of the items that we said we would revisit last week. Does anyone need a break? Okay. So we will go back to, we already talked about the trucks and the water fund, but we're going to go back to the municipal services budget. Okay, and that would be?
I believe the trees and the stoplight.
Yeah, we've, we're going to talk about trucks first, and then we'll talk about trees and stoplights, and I think we also have updated information on the chamber sound system. So, but the, just looking for the, the trucks. That was under capital purchases, correct? Page forty-one?
Yes.
Okay. Dan sent out an email on February twenty-fourth after our last meeting. Any discussion on that? That was, that was about HVAC though, and AED, tree trimming.
You were referencing, Mary.
Pardon?
Said page forty-one?
Page forty-one, correct. Account number thirty dash forty-eight fifteen.
You're talking about the trucks?
Right.
The one was up to three hundred and five thousand?
Right.
The other one was what, two thirty-five, Dan?
Yes.
And we were going to look at truck number?
Truck number one oh three, I think.
One oh three?
Yeah, was the one that we-
We were going to add that one?
So, yeah, Dan asked me to look at the rating on, on the truck, and so currently, as of November, when the mechanic last rated it, it has a fifty-four point seven four rating. While that may seem potentially far from the seventy-five number that's needed for replacement, what I did is I went back and looked at, and when I do my three-year projection, this is, I kind of do the same, I do the same thing, is I, I look back at the vehicle type and vehicles that were similar to it, and see how they progressed in their ratings as they got closer to replacement. So basically, when I looked at the other seven large trucks that we have, I kind, and not all of them, I had the information all the way back to when they were replaced, because we only started doing the ratings in like two thousand and thirteen, when the vehicle policy went into place. But what I basically kind of see is that it seems to average out that the trucks in the last two to three years before replacement, they start averaging about five to seven points every year increase. And so what, what I would see here is basically at a fifty-four point seven four rating, you know, if it's at the high side on that, which unfortunately they have been seeming to be with the, with the type of truck, that's an international truck.
Chris, can you pull the mic a little closer?
Yeah. So with, with the international trucks, it seems to be a little bit that they're kind of on the higher side compared to some of the older trucks that we had, when it comes to the ratings closer to replacement, being on the high side. So again, if this was right around that seven point increase every year, we would hit the seventy-five in three years, you know. And so I, I, I can't see it being much further out than three years if it didn't hit that number. But again, I don't think it's very far off, you know, so I, I can't, you know, I, I think it's a, probably a good choice if, if the council is, is good, not putting the money in to get the, get it ordered, because you're probably not going to really see the truck for, honestly, two years, you know, if, best guess.
If we add one oh three, would we, I mean, that's similar to one oh nine, excuse me, that's similar to one ten. One ten is at three oh five.
Yeah.
So would we be adding three oh five?
Yeah, I think there's a chance that it would come in a little bit less than that because one oh three is a tailgate, tailgate spreading truck, and one ten has the dual augers in the bed of the truck. So you're going to save a little bit on that. They both have chipper caps because they're both used for chipping. So that's going to be the same. So I think you'd save probably a little bit on, on it, but I think safe, if I was, if I was going to say to feel safe, based on everything I know, I would put the three hundred thousand dollars in there.
Three hundred and five, yeah.
Yeah, and, and feel safe, and, and our goal is to come in as low as possible every single time, you know, and save, save as much as we can.
Let me ask a question about maintenance. It just occurred to me that, you know, we're ordering these new trucks.
Mm-hmm.
And that there's going to be a delay, or be a long delay-
Yeah.
-in getting these. Does that mean that we're going to be seeing additional maintenance on the current trucks that we have?
Yes.
Is that going to increase our costs in terms of parts, material, and labor?
Yeah, yeah, it's very possible, you know. So one of the things, you know, even with truck one ten is currently it doesn't, as of when it got rated in November, it did not have the seventy-five rating. We're asking to, to get that ordered early because we're seeing, and just as I kind of told Dan today, is after last Thursday night and Friday morning snowstorm, we had to send the truck back down to Rush Truck Center because it, it won't do a parked regen. So the, the emissions on it, it basically has to go in there and burn off enough in order to get the system clean, and it can't do it. And basically, last time we had this happen, the, you know, we've had it happen on a few different trucks, and, and the, the repair cost basically runs somewhere between five and fifteen thousand dollars, depending on what's wrong. So that's unfortunate, that's the unfortunate part is, the answer is probably. But I, I, you know, I, I can't guarantee anything. I mean, we, you know, we've had it with, with truck, you know, one ten, again, earlier this year, we, we threw a transmission at it, you know, we had to replace the whole transmission. So it, you never know what goes.
So we're looking at then adding in one oh three at about three hundred and five thousand dollars, with the hope of, you know, getting it ordered, but the unlikeliness of it coming in this year?
No, yeah, well.
Is there consensus on the council to, to do that?
Yes.
Lester? Eric? Yeah, okay. So we'll go ahead and do that. Yes, Brian?
I'm sorry, one addition. Mayor Marquez mentioned the maintenance.
Yes.
And I'm just looking back, this, this current year we budgeted fifty-five, we're running high about ninety-nine. But this budget fifty-five, we did increase it to seventy-five for fiscal year twenty-three, which is more in line with fiscal year ending twenty-one. So we added a little bit to the budget.
So that's thirty dash forty-two twenty-five, maintenance vehicle, forty-two twenty-nine, maintenance vehicles?
Yeah, I mean, we didn't change the number since you have it. It just, I wanted to-
Right, but it is higher than-
Than the last year's budget.
Than last year's budget.
But it is less than-
But it's less than what we're actually coming in at.
This year, correct.
Okay. And do you want to keep it at seventy-five?
I'll talk to Chris and Dan tomorrow if, if, just to make sure they're comfortable with that number, given what we're talking about now and-
Okay.
-the long vehicles.
Okay, if you could put that on the list. Okay? Any more questions on vehicles? Okay. Then, um, let's wait to do the street light until we've done the other stuff. I know in a follow-up, we got a confirmed number on the HVAC system, which we modified last week. And we also modified the police department retaining wall. We've talked about the trucks. We've talked about the AED. Let's do tree trimming. That is in capital projects, right?
Streets.
Streets.
Streets, where, why am I not seeing that?
Forty-three seventy-five. It's above the budget where the trucks were.
Okay.
Page forty-one.
Jump the gun. Yep, I got it circled. So a hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars.
In a nutshell, right now we're paying sixty, sixty-four dollars, fifty-four dollars per tree for tree trimming. I did reach out to Homer after their, our initial conversation, that they would not be moving forward with an extension. We got, they came back with an offer, we countered the offer. So right now they're looking at, they've settled at eighty dollars per tree. With that said, one of the things we're going to do is we've canvassed several other municipalities that outsource the same service that we have, and we're going to put a average together. I just, you know, received something back from, brought Homer tree this morning, or late afternoon, so I did not have the opportunity to really get into it and determine what the median is. But we're going to use that figure right now. I think we used eighty-five dollars, so it's a good figure that we've increased in the budget for.
You said eighty, eighty again?
Eighty, correct, is what they've come back with.
Seventeen fifty.
Seventeen fifty, correct, is the total number of trees, right?
Hundred and forty thousand versus the ninety-four thousand.
Correct.
So you're looking at the tree trimming budget going up a total of about eighty-three thousand dollars?
Correct.
So yesterday you said they had offered eighty-five, and you were going to go back and offer them seventy-five. Do you guys-
I did, yeah, basically, correct. I offered them seventy-five, they told, they came back with eighty. That was the bottom line.
So you're still negotiating with them?
Well, we're done negotiating. I think now it's a matter of taking what we've received from other municipalities on recent bid tabulations to determine whether or not it is still a good price. So we'll be forthcoming with a decision. But we have monies, I feel, that are allocated for it in, in a fair amount.
Okay. Any more questions on tree trimming? Dan, anything else on that?
No.
Okay.
Listen, I think Eric wants his tree cut down, is what he was saying.
Yeah, I do. That'll save you eighty bucks.
But it'll be an increase in cost and removal.
A lot more than eighty.
I got rid of the one by a lightning bolt, so I'm praying for lightning for another one.
Okay, so I think that was everything we wanted to re- Revisit municipal services, streets engineering, correct? But then, now we're going to move on to capital projects. We also, though, in the agenda for today, there were attachments in the, did you want to talk about the, we didn't go back to administration, the equipment for the sound system? Do we want to do that?
I, we included that, I think Alderman Belzak asked about that because at the first meeting we did not have the-
The detail.
The detail and backup. So it's just really for information.
Okay. But I just want to ask to see, okay, so let's, that's in the administrative budget. So if you guys want to pull that back out in case there's a question regarding the equipment. And Lester, you raised your hand.
On, on the, the additional document, you said on page two, there's a typo for the computing software. That's eight comma zero zero. Looks like just eight dollars, but it should be eight thousand dollars. Eight dollars is good, but, you know.
Eight thousand, right. It's on page one, though, correct?
Is it page one?
Okay.
Page two, oh.
Is there any more discussion on fund ten dash forty-eight fifteen administrative, the equipment? This was backup to conversation for last week. Okay?
Sorry I'm late. I apologize.
It's okay.
The five thousand dollar contingency, what is, what is that for?
I don't know where you're at, Joe, I'm sorry.
He's on the administrative, page two of the, for the equipment, for the chambers and wireless mics. He's wondering what the five thousand dollar contingency is for.
I don't recall, I don't have that page with me now, but we have, we typically do put a contingency in, into that room, almost like we do for computers. You know, we have a little bit set aside in the event that something else goes wrong with, I mean, we have a number of separate pieces of equipment.
Okay.
Okay, if there's no further discussion on that, then we'll go back to the capital projects budget. And talk about the traffic light. We received supplemental information from Dan regarding this, and I know it was discussed at municipal services last night, correct?
That is correct.
Someone want to give me a synopsis of that? Share that synopsis?
It's up to you if you want me to do it. Well, it was on there to, for three things. One was to incur some costs in, in getting some work done with-
The engineering there.
The engineering, and it was two things. What was the other one?
The engineering and the traffic-
Nine thousand, twenty thousand.
And the actual implementation of the design. So there was two parts to it, the surveying and the bid preparation and engineering through CLOA. So those were for a total of thirty thousand dollars.
Twenty-nine something, yeah.
Yeah, twenty-nine thousand five hundred. That was part of the four hundred and fifty thousand of the four hundred and fifty thousand. Four hundred is allocated again for the street traffic signal, and fifty thousand was for engineering and/or utilities, utility relocates. Everything else has been accounted for. So the committee had discussed it, and I know we also had discussed the three questions that were brought up at the previous budget meeting.
Mm-hmm.
The one question that is not, that is not answered was, does CLOA believe a traffic signal should be installed there? They won't answer that, that's an opinion, and it's more a biased, a biased opinion, where they, they present the facts with the engineering report, whether it meets or does not meet the warrants. It currently does not meet the warrants again. So, and the main question was, could have accidents been prevented with a traffic signal in place? The answer is yes. In conjunction with that, the other question that's a follow-up was whether or not there would be cut-through traffic through the local neighborhood roadways. That answer is primarily no, and I say that because there may be some limited cut-through, very limited. Again, it's more of a wait-and-see approach, but as we look at it, it really doesn't make sense from, for anybody to be cutting through. I think Alderman Kenny had presented a point of how he cuts through, if you wanted to go through that scenario again, so.
He's still working on it.
But, anyway, long story short, is the committee had reached a conclusion of a two oh vote with one abstention. And Alderman Gustafson was the abstention, and again, I think he, his main concern was on the abstention, was if Willa Brook doesn't approve it, and correct me if I'm wrong, Eric, if Willa Brook doesn't approve it, does that put us into any type of buying? The answer is no. The city council, municipal services will have the opportunity to review this item at a minimal of two more times. Once will be the preliminary, preliminary and final for the contract itself. So regardless, my plan on putting this on the city council agenda for March, for this Monday, the village of Willa Brook, the IGA and the two engineering agreements, the village of Willa Brook is going to be entertaining the subject at their village meeting on March fourteenth. So again, if Willa Brook says no, it's still up to the city council of Darien to say yes or no. We'll have plenty of opportunity. We can all- We can always take a wait-and-see approach. If this item is inclusive of the budget, then when we get the final pricing through the bid tabulations, if we get that far, we'll have another opportunity to say, no, we're not gonna do it, or we can shelve it for whatever reason. Whether the costs are too high, or, um, the atmosphere has changed for whatever reason. And again, they can, um, Willbrook is committed to twenty-five percent or a maximum of two hundred thousand dollars for the project. I think that's really, in a nutshell, I'm not sure if any of the committee members from last night want to add anything else to that.
Mayor Marquez?
I had a phone conversation with Mayor Trilla on Thursday. He called me because several of our aldermen contacted him, um, with regard to this project. And he told me unequivocally that Willbrook fully supports this project, that he himself travels through that intersection several times a day, that his daughter and his family does. And he says, and that's, that is an intersection that has quite a few issues that he felt that a stoplight would address. And he was happy that we were bringing it up this time. But he told me, he said, he was assuring me that, um, as mayor of Willbrook, he was going to, uh, make sure that that proposal went through with his council.
Thank you, Mayor Marquez. Brian, Vanna.
My only point was, was last night, too, was, I mean, if, and if that's being true, take the twenty-five percent off and let them go in at the two hundred and forget the twenty-five percent rule. And let them go in at two hundred thousand.
Well, the agreement, it really has been negotiated, and, and those terms are what-
Not final.
Is coming to the committee and coming to Willbrook.
But it's not final. Can be adjusted. I just think-
Well, then you should ask the council.
I think they should be in at two hundred, otherwise, we're taking the burden.
We only have, we control three quarters of that intersection. They only quarter, they only-
They've got a probably a lot more traffic coming from their direction.
Mr. Mayor, I know that there was confusion in the past. We control all four. Our control is basically four. So, if anything, uh, it's our total responsibility. We control the intersection. We maintain it, and we police it. So, it's all Darien, actually.
But the northeast corner is Willbrook, right?
From, from a traffic standpoint-
Not from a traffic, I'm talking about geography.
Residents, the address on the northeast corner is Willbrook.
Right, and it's one thing we're gonna take a look at, is when the survey comes back in, that we're gonna clean up any type of boundary, boundary agreements, which is at no cost. I just wanna make sure that, you know.
But it's a Darien intersection, is what you're saying.
Correct.
But I would love to know where the drivers are coming from, what community they live in, they're going through the intersection.
I think that would be a tough thing to figure out.
Love to know that number.
You could have people- I think the, the accident reports that you got showed a lot of it. And it's, most of them aren't from Darien or Willbrook. I mean, there are some.
Yeah.
But there was all over the place that we're driving through that intersection, and the accidents. And I think the seventeen reports that the chief provided us.
And one of the things that we had briefly discussed yesterday is, is why that intersection is so plagued. And I think the analogy, I, I know the analogy that I had, uh, utilized was that Claren Hills Road is, everyone knows Claren Hills is a thoroughfare, if you wanna say. Whereas Sixty-seventh Street, if you're traveling down Claren Hills Road, you don't anticipate Sixty-seventh Street being a thoroughfare in comparison to the rest of Claren Hills Road. For example, Maple, you would think that Sixty-seventh Street would be compared to a Maple Avenue, or a Seventy-first Street, or a Sixty-ninth Street. That's not the case, because it's, it's the only real through street from Route eighty-three to Cass Avenue. So, everything else is in between. So, I think that's part of it, is residents, non-residents, don't expect that jump out from Sixty-seventh Street is the only thing that I can analyze. I've been, you know, and again, I've been dealing with this intersection through my career, if you wanna say. So, again, I'm just, you know, seeing, presenting some of the insights that I've seen and/or discussed with, uh, the traffic engineers.
Brian Vanna.
Yeah, Dan brought up all the scenarios. He brought up the contribution from Willbrook and the agreement. Eric mentioned something different. I would hate to go to Willbrook the night that, uh, they approve it, and then we ask for changes. So, I think this, this is an important issue, to make sure the rest of the council, even though they'll see the agreement next week, are in, um, conceptual agreement with that and the amount of money that Willbrook's giving us, because they don't have to give us anything. We went to them, it's our project. So, I just am curious, because I don't wanna slight Willbrook and change.
So, we're gonna first talk, we're gonna first do a consensus on, is the council comfortable with proceeding with the current agreement as it stands? Twenty-five percent up to two hundred thousand dollars? Yes, 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 yes?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Alderman Gustafson?
Abstain.
Abstain. So, we have a majority here saying yes. Forge ahead with the current agreement. Okay. So, then, is there any more discussion on the traffic light?
The only other point is, then, I did not add the revenue yet in from Willbrook. So, I will adjust that now that we have their commitment. So, that'll be a swing of, um, prob, I'll just probably put a hundred thousand dollars in there, and Dan and I will talk maybe a little more. But, so that's not reflective yet, and it will be.
And then, I guess, just going back around, there's obviously a consensus for us to move forward with keeping this in the budget. I know we agreed on the agreement, but everyone's in, you know, not everyone, but is there a majority in favor of proceeding with this as a budgeted item?
Yes, I mean, last week, I had concerns. Uh, a lot of them were satisfied by what we got from Cloa and what we got from, is the type of accidents. I always said that safety was my biggest concern here. And when I found out fifty-three of the, I wanna say fifty-three of the fifty-nine were angle accidents, which could normally be stopped by a traffic light. That's exactly what I wanted to hear. So, now, I'm comfortable with it.
Okay. And that helped, I think, the rest of, at least for me personally, it reassured me, too, that that was the information we needed to kinda seal the deal. Anyone else?
Are these other studies then being done? Or what's the?
We're done with studies.
Done, so none of the, okay.
Correct.
Have to worry of anything else coming. Okay.
I have a question.
Yes.
The three items that you're talking about for the intersection of Sixty-seventh and Claren Hills Road, they were put under the consent agenda. Should they be removed to new business so that there can be discussion? I don't know.
I would put them under new business at this point.
Well, I didn't look at the, I know Maria just put that, put out today, and I didn't get a chance to review it yet, so, uh.
So, it's for the city council meeting on Monday?
Right, because, well, we got the draft agenda, and I did make a comment to her, depending on what the vote was at the meeting for Municipal Services. But with the discussion here, perhaps there should also be discussion on Monday evening regarding the, uh, the three items for the intersection.
From a protocol standpoint, if we look at abstention goes with cons, uh, consent, so.
But under consent, it's usually a majority, and he could ask at that meeting for, to be removed and put under new business.
No, I mean, that's understood.
We would go that route. We'll keep it on a consent, and if anybody wants to ask it to come off, it could come off. Because it did go to committee and got approved, and that's what we typically try to do, things that are approved in committee.
That would happen in the pre-council, right?
We, we'd have the same conversation at city council next week as we're having today, and what we had at the last budget meeting, and what we had last night, I mean, so I don't know.
We're repeating ourselves to repeat ourselves.
What more are you gonna talk about?
Well, last night, your, your vote was three-zero, then?
Two's-
It was three-zero on two of the matters, and two-zero on an abstention on one of them.
Oh, there were only two of you there?
No, no. Mr. Alderman Gustafson abstained on one of the votes.
On one of them.
Abstention goes with the majority.
So, we'll leave it on consent.
Okay. I just wanna make sure that, all right.
Okay, so is there any more discussion on that? Nope. Any more items that people want to bring up regarding the budget? Okay. As noted in the communication that went out today about tonight's meeting, there will be, um, a discussion at the March twenty-first city council meeting relating to, um, a public works building. And information will be available prior to that. Anything else for tonight? Yes?
I'm sorry, maybe we can clarify before we continue with the discussion for the public works. What is the goal? If, if I may ask, you know, again, I think we all have been through the needs. So, basically, just to recap, I wanna get the flavor of what everyone is looking for. You know, is it potential, uh, for the agenda, this is, you know, poten- potential land acquisition, um, potential total cost of which phase to go with, what the cost could possibly be to the city, whether it's through, um, revenue sources and/or bonds. So, I don't know if there's any more clarification or direction that the council would like to give, give us.
I had understood that, um, Dan would bring back the, the cost for the rehab of the building. I think, Dan, you have a more recent cost. I don't know if it's much different, where you go kinda the whole lot.
Yeah, slightly, but, yeah.
Slightly, so we would come back with that, and we would come back with, um, a revenue discussion. And should the, um, discussion evolve into, well, should we build a new building? I mean, that's pretty simple. That's then a dollar amount we could, we could just put in, because we'd have to acquire land, and we have to build the building. I mean, that, that's how I intend.
That's correct. I just wanna make sure that's still the flavor, or there's not, you know, if there's any other, um, caveats that you'd like us to explore, you know, try to solidify this and come to a decision on whether we'd shelve it or whatever the case is.
I think what you've offered, Dan, is what people need to know.
I think that's the expectation, at least for me personally. I'm not gonna speak for everybody that I have. And I know when we had this conversation prior, two years ago plus, you know, there was land acquisition possibilities that no longer exist. So, is there anything out there that's even possible, feasible? But, um, yeah, I mean, just, I guess, a, an update on the situation from a couple of years ago. And, um, I also bring to light any, um, critical issues in the current facilities that, like, need to be addressed, that you, you find dire.
Yeah, we're gonna conclude all that for next year's budget.
I figured, yeah, so.
Yeah, okay.
You're gonna look, you're gonna give everybody a cost, a design for remodel, a cost for remodel. If, you're gonna talk about the conditions, what that would accomplish?
My goal, right, my goal would be to present one of the three options for the remodel, which is basically, I won't say knocking down the building, but basically maybe saving the office and redoing the rest of it. So, that's really the only optimal, and Chris, correct me if I'm wrong, that's the optimal option that we saw. The second option is identifying some parcels that have the potential to include future growth. Now, the only, there's two potentials, either voluntary sales and/or condemnation. So, that's the second part of it. What it all boils down to is, A, cost for maintaining where we're at with no future growth, or option B, with the land acquisition with the potential for future growth for the next twenty, thirty, forty years. So, that's really the gist of it, in a nutshell. And along with the costs and the potential revenues.
And will you provide these scenarios to us prior to the meeting, so we have a chance to review them?
Oh, definitely, definitely, yeah. I, I just don't wanna go back and repeat, um, you know, what scenarios of the three remodels are the best. I think that's all been concluded, so I wanna bring forth the information that is the best information and the optimal operations.
That will be in the packet for the meeting.
Correct. Does anyone have any questions about that for Dan, or expectations you wanna share?
And if anybody wants to go and take a tour, I know I've offered this several times. Many of the elected officials have been through there already, so I don't wanna be a broken record. And again, if, if there's residents' concerns, uh, you know, anytime. They don't need me there. Chris, our two foremen are there. It's an open house. It's the city of Darien's, you know, prize.
I'd be glad to show up, Dan, if you need more people to show around.
Yeah, that's a problem right there.
Any more things that need to be discussed on the budget packet?
A quick question regarding that.
And the budget workshop?
I remember the, the least expensive thing was just replacing the roof. Is that correct?
The roof.
That's my memory of two years ago.
That's really, yeah, that's in a nutshell, the roof and maybe the windows, again.
And, and has there, has there been any deterioration in the roof, or has anything changed since two years ago regarding the roof and the windows?
We have a bigger tarp now under the roof where it catches the water, so that has been improved, and that was done as.
Did Brian Houghy get that?
The windows, I think they put plastic on them now, and a little more shades. No, they said, forget it, so.
Yeah, I'm-
Bigger buckets to catch the water.
Okay. I think you answered that.
We've upgraded it.
And they go to church and pray regularly every Sunday if it doesn't rain?
Snow.
Is there anything anyone else has to add for the meeting, for the budget?
I know Woodridge needs to, they're talking about getting their Public Works at some point in the future.
Oh, they're doing it.
Police and, police and Municipal Services, thirty million. Right on James Avenue.
Thirty million.
Significant dollars.
It's for police.
It's a whole municipal, it's in a whole facility, though. Police, San, and Municipal Services. Yeah. Kinda like what Countryside did.
It's two departments, Brian, fifteen million apiece.
Actually, it was, um, three-point-five million for land acquisition. They took out a five-million-dollar bond. They spent three and a half million on, uh, land acquisition. So, the other twenty-six and a half billion dollars is the facility.
If there's nothing further?
I have one more thing to say, Mayor. It's kind of related to the budget, but, you know, sometimes I will read some of the social media next door and some of that. And, um, Dan and I have a working relationship where it's, where we banter, we argue, and I would never have it any other way. So, somebody, somebody, one person, who uses a fake name, I believe, made some comment about me not liking Dan. And it was, it's so ridiculous. And I think these meetings are a good place for us to have debate and not necessarily agree. So, uh, I would-
You guys haven't liked each other.
So, you do like me?
Twenty years, come on, who are you kidding?
I would love nothing more than to continue to work with Dan for a long time. And just in case the council saw that and had any inclination that, that false comment had any credibility, it has zero credibility.
So, you do like me?
I love Dan Boebach.
He wants to take you on a date.
That's why they put me in the middle here.
I have to echo off of Brian's comments, no questions asked, you know. I read that, and really, for anybody to say that is really despicable. Again, we debate, we banter. At the end of the day, a conclusion, we respect each other's decisions. And Alderman Marquez, since he's here every day, I think is very pervy to that, where he walks, turns around and walks away from us because he's not sure if we're gonna start swinging sometime, but.
I think you're like brothers, if anything. I, that's, that's how I see it.
See, guys, just to piggyback, anybody made a joke about you guys not liking each other. I've seen you guys work together for twelve years, and that's how you guys are day in and day out. And if you guys didn't have arguments or didn't have discussions, this place wouldn't be running top-notch.
I was gonna say, you know, I'm here every day, and I, I see what goes on. And I, and I'll tell you, we are one of the most effective, uh, city staffs in terms of getting things done, and it's because of the interaction between everyone here. These two will banter, and it's comic relief for me, because I can see that. And, you know, he's, he's Putin one day, and he's somebody else.
I'm not Putin ever. Bad example.
Yeah. But no, I, it's, you know what? It's, it's, um, it's their, it's personalities. But at the end of the day, I think, any, everyone in this room, and anyone who's in City Hall frequently, will attest to the professionalism and the, um, working relationships, the camaraderie, and the fact that the city of Darien is a well-oiled machine when it comes to operations, both at City Hall, at the police department, and at Municipal Services, so.
I say this not to the person who wrote it. It's just in case people read that, because some people read stuff like that and wanna give it credibility. So, it's not to the writer, it's to everybody else who might read that and just wonder.
Well, I think it was a good point.
Well, since we're on fake names, and I'm gonna use this as a soapbox to stand on, I do not le, I do love Darien. I did not move my business out of Darien to go to Downers Grove, because I don't like Darien, okay? So, the company that I'm working with now had some great training and had some great opportunities for me, and I went to it. Like anybody else reading on any social media pages would take a, um, an improvement of their careers to do that. And that's what I did. I did not go to move my business to Downers Grove because I don't like Darien. and that's what I did. I did not go to move my business to Downers Grove because I don't like Darien. So I'm just going to put that out there. I mean, dumb.
We're going to talk about that. It was mentioned that Brian and Dan liked each other more when Kathy was here versus me. And that I micromanaged Dan and Brian, so when I was out for two weeks because I was in COVID, I came back and I asked them what the hell they got done in two weeks since I wasn't here and micromanaged them.
The whole place shut down, Mayor Joe.
There's a church area now. It's Joe, Brian, and Mary who run the city, and Kenny is on the outskirts because he moved to Downers Grove.
Well, you can't give... Trust me, being in the communication business, you can't give any validity to, you know, that. You just... You can't. Yeah, I know, so. All I know is we know the truth. We know what's real.
And I will try speaking more clearly and concise. Apparently, I'm not doing that, so I'm going to do... Work at... I'm going to work at that, okay?
Well, I do believe having masks off and having a new system in place will help all of us project and be heard clearly. So let's bring it all, reel it all in, everybody, okay? I'm reeling it in.
Very nice job.
Eric's the fisherman, so Eric, we're going to reel it in, right?
I think he had a question. I'm sorry.
When do these go away? I'm really tired of those things.
The mics?
The partitions. He's asking about the plexiglass.
Tomorrow morning. Yeah, we can pull those down now, right?
I read that fishing boat is your happy place.
It is. Very much so.
And by the way...
We'll talk about that offline.
Happy birthday.
Oh, thank you.
Is it your birthday today, Eric? Well, Happy Wayback Burgers opened up.
It's Sunday. Facebook's a little early.
If there's... Is there any further discussion?
I think we're done.
We have officially finished reviewing the fiscal year twenty-three budget. Let's give us all a round of applause.
Great job, great job.
Thank you. And we will be getting some updates to numbers. Updated documents will be available. But Brian, the date for it to be on city council will still remain April sixth, correct? Okay, so the city council will have a public hearing on April sixth to review and approve the budget. With that being said, this meeting's adjourned. Thank you very much, and have some snacks.